It is 7 o'clock on the nose. We're going to go ahead and get started. Thank you, everybody, for joining us at City Council this evening. We are in order right at 7:00, and we will observe a moment of silent reflection. And then if you would join me for the pledge, please. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would draw your attention, members of council, to line item number four on the agenda approving the meeting minutes. We have a special meeting of 7:15 available for you to approve tonight. Is there a motion to approve that as presented?
So.
Motion by Jack, second by Rob. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes on opposed, that motion carries. Up next, under recognition of guests, we welcome our friends from the Rotary Club of Buchanan Upsher. Tina Cunningham and Keith Buchanan would like to present to us this evening about a recycling project. Good evening.
I've had the privilege of serving Rotary at the club, district, and zone levels, and I currently serve as the Area 7 District Governor, and I've recently transferred to the Buchanan Upsher Club. I'm a business owner, a real estate agent, a community leader, and above all else, a community servant, always looking to give back. So I'm sure that many of you have heard, "Give a man a fish, and he will eat for a day; teach a man to fish, and he will eat for a lifetime." I often think about that when I think about service projects. Through my work, my business, and Rotary, I've always tried to approach projects with that mindset. It's one thing to go out and do something, but it's more powerful when it creates something that teaches, empowers, and lasts long after we're gone. So that's what excites me about this recycling project. That's what I'm here to speak about. It's not just about the plastics that we collect today, or even the playground equipment that we'll be able to purchase tomorrow. It's about putting something sustainable in place that can keep making a difference for years to come. With your input, and the help of Rotarians, the community, and the support of the city, I believe that's possible. So with that vision in mind, I'd like to walk you through what this project looks like. In page one of the handout, it's how it all started. Recycle Beyond the Bag. Rotary's first step was joining the Recycle Beyond the Bag Initiative. This program allows us to collect soft plastics like grocery bags, bread bags, bubble wrap that normally get thrown away. The motto is simple: For every 1,000 pounds collected, once per year, we earn a recycled bench. It was a small but meaningful way to get started, and it showed us that something bigger could grow out of it. Page two and three is the press release from that. And part two was business and community involvement. As we started, we realized something important: Local businesses are not recycling soft plastics. Right now, they're just throwing them in the trash. However, when we spoke with them, many expressed a willingness to donate the plastic if someone would collect them, and that's where Rotary members stepped in. We also wanted to involve the community, so we've placed collection boxes at Cobble Banker, Kelly Tierney State Farm, and we have one in our Rotary meeting at Chapel Hill. And since that last meeting, 10 more boxes are being placed in locations. Looking ahead, we plan to have recycling information available at the Rotary Recycle and Play Park itself. This creates not only a plan for future collection drop-off, but also provides an educational opportunity for children to grow up, learning that they too can play a part in recycling. And part three was the baler. As this project grew, we realized we could take it a step further. Instead of just collecting plastic, why not bale our own? The baler we need costs $12,000, and in your packet you will see the specs for the baler, the storage container, and how the trailer is loaded. Here's how it works. Grassroots Recycling has agreed to provide a storage container at no cost to us. When it's full, they send a tractor-trailer to pick up the load. And at that point, we get 14 cents per pound. What we need from the city is simple: A place to house the baler and the storage container. This includes providing the electrical supply. And once a month, provide an operator of the baler to bale the plastic that Rotarians deliver. Providing the location for the installation of a Rotary Recycle and Play Park. The collection, transport, and organization of the plastic will be handled by Rotary members, along with Grassroots Recycling as our partner, and any collection assistance needed from the city would be scheduled well in advance. The fourth component is funding and grants. In terms of funding, here's where we stand. In seven days, we collected $3,000 in donations. We've applied for a Rotary grant, which could bring in up to 2,000, and we've also applied for a second grant for up to 30,000. In your packet, you will see the information regarding the program and the recognition levels for our donors. Our goal is to fully fund the baler and start-up costs, so that the program can begin operating as soon as possible. And the fifth component was the vision, the Rotary Recycle and Play Park. The bigger picture goes beyond recycling. Our goal is to use the revenue generated from the baled plastic to purchase inclusive playground equipment. We would love to see a Rotary Recycle and Play Park right here in Buchanan, and a possible site could be the North Buchanan River Front Park. The playground would feature pour-in-place turf made from recycled materials. This does require excavation and a crushed recycled stone base, but the end result is durable, safe, and environmentally responsible. And this vision doesn't stop in Buchanan. Over time, we'd like to expand this project to add equipment to other parks across Upsher County. Eventually, we could even support other counties and Rotary Clubs. For example, the Fairmont Rotary Club already has a surplus of plastic they're willing to share with us. In return, we could donate a piece of equipment to one of their playgrounds. We have businesses in Elkins and Weston that are also donating plastic, and we could easily donate a piece of equipment to the park in their area. And the sixth component, why it matters. Why are Rotarians doing this? Well, because soft plastics are one of the most overlooked recyclables. Currently, there's no recycling option available in Upsher County, resulting in these items ending up in landfills. This project solves that problem, but it also does much more. It creates inclusive play opportunities for children of all abilities. It teaches children and families the importance of recycling by letting them participate firsthand. And it's sustainable. Every bale of plastic becomes not just a step toward a cleaner community, but also a source of funding for future playgrounds. Together, we can make the Rotary Recycle and Play Park a reality, a project that starts here in Buchanan, but grows into a model of how service, recycling, and community development can come together to create something lasting. With your partnership, we can make this happen, and I truly believe Buchanan can be a leader in showing recycling and community service can come together to create lasting change. I appreciate your support, your guidance, and your chance to work alongside you to bring this project to life. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Scott?
Yeah, just clarifying, the location you were requesting from the city was one of those.
Yes.
Someone to operate.
The baler, yes.
And someone to maintain it as well, or is that grassroots?
Well, grassroots will provide the storage unit and the pickup. The maintenance, the machine would be under warranty, so...
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a refurbished machine. I mean, it's fairly new.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
If I could interject here too for Scott. Early this week, I had a meeting, I'm a Rotarian, but also the city representative. I met with Tina and Keith early on, and then I had a sit-down meeting with Ethan Prost and Dakota Arnold from the Waste Department, as well as Amy Jenkins, and we discussed the possibility of taking this through council first, of course, and then taking it to the Waste Department for their final approval. And Dakota felt comfortable saying that there was space in the current building to install this piece of equipment. And Ethan felt comfortable that the city could handle the electrical hookup, the three-phase electric cook-up. And then the third component would be an operator once a month to create these bales. We would have the equipment that could move those bales into the storage trailer. One thing Tina mentioned was, once in a while, we may have to pick something up. Let's say one of our partners out in the community has their own bales of plastic, and they're about 900 pounds. We may schedule a pickup now and then of those bales. But as I told both Tina and Keith, that would have to be done early on. It couldn't be a surprise. It's not one of those things that you call up Tuesday morning and say, "Well, you got to get the bale today."
And I will add that the only large business that's recycling right now is Wendlin's, and they've offered to give us four bales that, they're 900 pounds each, between 800 and 850, 900, it really just depends. For math purposes, we did, I think I did like 850. Once they come to pick up a trailer load, that's about $2,800. So every time we collect that much. So I've reached out to Warehouser, St. Joseph's, the mattress place, they're all willing to set up a time for me to come and get like smaller loads, so that we can just take the plastic ourselves and drop it off.
Right.
I have a meeting tomorrow with Warehouser and the hospital to figure out a time that we could pick it up. The other place, the mattress place, theirs is a little bit smaller, but I mean, it's still a lot of plastic. The mattress place told me they have like a box trailer full of plastic almost every week. That's a lot of money and a lot of plastic.
There's a lot of volume out there, and we will engage businesses. We talked to two large ones, and they're very supportive for a couple of reasons. One is it provides a solution. The other is, when they found out what we could do with this, the end result is a park that is now made accessible to people who don't have access to that kind of facility. And the other thing is that I know, for example, Wendlin's bales once a week. So it's easy to schedule a week ahead if people have to pick it up. We have to make this whole process as easy as possible with a group of people who know exactly what they do, and we're going to prove it out. The first load we pick up, we've got to make sure everything went right. The first time we bale this thing, it went right, and then we will continue to talk to the partners to make sure we repeat it, but improve it, because I see this as not just a nice project for me to get involved in because I'm retired, but this is a legacy project that if we want to continue doing this and the players are here, this can last for years and years and years and build equity for any of the people involved.
And I have a rough draft in your packet of my plan. That was something I threw together very quickly after the very first week of, we said, "Hey, bring us your plastic so we can get a recycled bench out of it." It just kind of went, "Oh, okay." So it's a rough draft, but it's, I feel like a good draft, and I think it's a good start. And there's several phases to this, but it's, I just want to see everybody as excited about it as I am and my club is, because I really think we have the potential to do something amazing here.
Was this your idea?
It was.
What made you think about it?
Well, I have a friend in Rotary who is very big on recycling, and I will honestly say that I was not. I was very, and this was two years ago, I went with her to do this project with the Fairmont Rotary Club, and it was very small. They were just doing a bench for, one for Rotary and one for Girl Scouts. And I was collecting the plastic, and I was taking it to the drop-off location with her and weighing it and doing all the things, and I was like, "I need to do better." So I started at home doing better. And then I recently, as an area governor, I have Buchanan, Weston, and Braxton County, so I come over here a lot for meetings. The more that I started making friends here and talking to everybody, I was like, "What do you guys think about this project?" So it's something that I've thought about for two years and had the right friends and the right people who said, "Wow, let's see what we can do."
Timing is right.
Yeah.
The city has been investing so much in handicap-accessible roads, sidewalks, and this is just the next step.
Sounds very exciting.
It is, thank you, babe. And it's going to affect young people too, the next generation.
I think it's a tremendous project, and I'm sorry.
Everybody with one of that needs to turn it.
Yeah. I apologize. I think it's a tremendous project. I think the playground equipment with the recycled base, I guess, we'll call it that.
Sure. It's partially recycled. There's some components. I have talked to someone who will donate the excavator to, because it has to be seven inches deep for the area. They lay down crushed stone, and then they do the pour-in-place. They do all, they set up all the equipment. I have handouts on all of that, you know, like, I know that's a phase for later, but I have explored those options. Yes. Yeah, I have explored that, so that I knew what we were looking into.
Ethan's wheels are probably turning about that, but yeah, that park installation would be under our supervision if indeed it is in North Buchanan Park. And again, that's something that would have to go through the proper channel to get that approval. But Tina has worked it out with a company or a vendor that would do the excavating and...
A local, yeah, local, yeah. And then, like, as far as the playground equipment, they would set up, they do all of that. They construct it, they do all of it.
This is a great role model for many, many towns and cities.
It is, and we're learning from people who are beginning it, doing it, mistakes that they've made. And I think this whole learning process, one step at a time, but we're communicating. And then once a year, we're going to sit down and evaluate how it worked, bring the same people back together and say, "How are we going to do it better next year, and what are our goals?" And that can be built into the process that, Andy and you folks should look at every year.
And then the final thing is, as I explained to them too, since this would involve a lot of our enterprise boards, the city, Rotary Project, so on and so forth, we would engage a memorandum of understanding of some type. I spoke to Mr. O'Neil, he, our city attorney, he felt it wouldn't have to be that extensive, but just something that does outline everyone's responsibilities and just protects all parts concerned.
So the motion this evening, if you wish to do so, would be to approve from the council's perspective, but refer to the City of Buchanan Waste Board for final approval, since it does involve that portion of our, of our operation.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
So a motion by Mr. Thomas, a second by Mr. Sanders, any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, so the motion will be crafted as the City Council approves our participation with this project and refers to the City of Buchanan Sanitary Board, or Sanitary, sorry, Waste Board for final approval. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes on opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tina.
That's great.
I'm sorry, I was going to give it to you wrong, but this is my first contribution to the program.
Thanks.
What is this?
It's positive facts.
How do you know what to do with this? It's a great idea. It really is.
Councilman Rigger has one final question.
Is this, are you wanting a financial contribution for the city as well as...
This conference will now be recorded.
It's service only to help us with that baler and storage. That's all I would ask.
If we make, if people make contributions to this program, where do they write the check to?
The Rotary Club of Buchanan Upsher. We've established a separate checking account for this fund, so that when we generate the revenue from the recycling, it goes into that account, and then we can see, because we've applied for grants, we have to show that match, and that way we can write a check for playground equipment right out of that checking account.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So our recognized guest portion is complete. Now we move to the public comment section of those who signed up that wish to speak to us here this evening. I entertain a motion that we open the public comment period. Motion by Randy's or second?
Second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes on opposed, a motion carries. All right, we are in the public comment section, and first up is Tammy Rigger from the Buchanan Upsher Chamber of Commerce.
Hello, Tammy.
So I see on the agenda that you have on there the consideration of funding for Leadership Upsher. So I just wanted to come, I know that one of your concerns, the last time I spoke to you, was that you weren't receiving up-to-date information update on the program. So I wanted to bring you what we've done in the last two weeks, which is quite a bit. The chamber's had the program for about the last 30 days. We saw some problems with it, so the chamber took it over. You'll notice on that first page, that is our class announcement for this year. Last year, there were 14, or seven students in the class that participated. This year, we've doubled that size to 14. Out of those 14, we've got a high school student that's going through the program. We've got a young female that works for the West Virginia Department of Commerce that's going through the program. We've got a new manager to the area. We've got a couple on there that work in neighboring counties, but they reside in Upsher County that'll be going through the program. We've got a couple that are involved with nonprofits. So that'll be our class for the year. The next page on there, you'll see the class schedule. We did a lot of adjustments to this. We do have nine sessions, but we will have those nine sessions in seven months, because the hope is to graduate this class at the Chamber Annual Dinner this year, instead of having just a separate graduation for the class. We have also changed things up with the agenda. The first day, the Upsher County Day, that'll be a day where we go out and we meet potential sites for a service project. So we're going to meet different organizations that could be a good fit for a service project, and then the group will choose from those an idea, and they'll pitch that idea. If that idea, let's just say it was an art installation, then they'll have to come to City Council or County Commission and present that idea to, if they need approval, they get approval, and work on that service project. So you would be seeing the group at that time. We are planning a trip on the government day to Charleston to meet with our local legislatures down there, so that will be a new item on the agenda also. We do have a Higher Education Day on the agenda, and some of our Wesleyan mentors will be leading that day for us. We have a Healthcare Day, and Skip Yilberg and Trish Hullett will be leading that day for us and will be the mentors for that day. We've added a Manufacturing and Industry Day this year that is new, and that was taken from the Leadership West Virginia program. Actually, the Leadership West Virginia is meeting right now in Morgantown, and they are doing their manufacturing and industry session right now. We will have a group retreat, which also Leadership West Virginia does, and that will work on team building, how you work as a team, not just an individual, in leadership. And then, like I said, the service project, and then we'll have graduation with the Chamber Annual Dinner that is held at the Event Center. Of course, we'll have the logos of all of our sponsors on the screens and that type of thing. We're going to kick our program off this year with a meet-and-greet luncheon, and that will be a networking for all of our past alumni. Leadership West Virginia is really big on alumni networking and keeping in contact with those people that you went through the classes with. I went through and graduated in 2016. I'm still in touch with those people. I still reach out to them for help with issues when I'm running the chamber. So we're going to start with a meet-and-greet lunch on August 25th for our sponsors, our class participants, and our alumni for the program. You'll also see in that packet that there is some bio testimonials from participants that went through the program in the past, and what value they saw come out of the program. And then we're just hoping that we can, like I said, we know there were some problems. Communication was one of them. That's why I'm back again to let you know that we've made some changes in the last two weeks. We're excited about bringing the program into the chamber. The current board that's sitting now is the Chamber Executive Board. Once we get our feet on the ground and running with this, we'll determine what that board for Leadership Upsher should look like, and then we'll put some seats there. Any questions that I can answer about the program?
Any council members have any questions that Tammy may not have covered?
This program, we're really excited to say that Community Care and St. Joseph Hospital have not only came back on board, but they believe that it's going to be a successful program underneath of the chamber, so they've increased their donation to this program this year because the chamber's running it. Create Buchanan is on board with this program. The County Commission is a title sponsor of this program. So I really would like to work with the city also and have your support for this program.
And you have a budget for this next year?
We have, there was a budget in place prior, but like I said, we have changed the agenda quite a bit, so some of those costs are going to change because this agenda has completely been reworked, and so we will see some...
Both up and down?
Probably up. We have twice as many participants this year as what they had last year. And then, like I said, we're making a trip to Charleston, we're doing some things like that. I'm not sure what the service project, yet what they're going to pick and what that's going to involve. You know, if it's an art installation, of course, it's going to involve more money than what it would be if they're just doing, you know, trail work or something like that. So we're going to get through the first year and see how we do and where our budgets fly and that kind of thing.
I'll disclose too, I'm a member of the board, a director for the Chamber of Commerce this year as well. But in talking, you said, you talked about your budget. Are all of these events covered budget-wise now with the participation you have, or are you still, is that one of the reasons you're still asking for more support, is to make sure that these sessions are all funded properly?
Correct. We've added quite a few, like I said, of different ones, and we will have the service project to cover also. So that is the reason that we're asking for support.
Here, weren't you, didn't you go through this yourself?
No. The city, since this has only been around in Buchanan for three, four years, three?
Yeah.
So we've participated each year, and we've hosted the group here at City Hall for a government learn day. Us and the County Commission have kind of shared the same day.
So previously, this group was kind of a grassroots group, and there was just some funding participants and people that met around a table and made decisions, and it was pretty much ran by one individual, and we saw some issues with organization and the way the program was being ran. So that's when we called a meeting and said, "There's a problem, and we know there's a problem, so therefore, somebody needs to take this program over."
Who was enjoying it before?
What? I don't know the...
I mean, what, I'm not saying...
It was just a, just a local business.
Local business.
And so therefore, the chamber stepped up and said, "We don't want to lose the program. You know, all of our neighboring counties have the program, it's successful. We know that this program can feed into Leadership West Virginia, and those people will come back to Upsher County after they've gone through the program. I'm graduate of Leadership West Virginia, I know the program is successful and it helps." So that's why we don't want to see the program end, so the chamber stepped up and said, "We'll take it over," which is not something that we do lightly. The chamber doesn't put its name on something that they definitely think they can be successful at.
One of the things I was kind of questioned early on in the program, there was people entering the program that were already accomplished leaders, some retirees, you know, and I just wondered, I hadn't scratched my head, you know, at what point in your life, I mean, we don't want to quit learning. We all want to quit learning, but tell me about this particular class. Does this class...
So the first year, I think, with, is when you're talking about that participant went through, and I think the first year, this was a new program, and I think that they were just trying to get participants through the program. And so that was an individual that paid his own tuition through the program, and they were just looking for participants to put in spots, because it was new and nobody knew anything about it. So this is a new admissions person at West Virginia Wesleyan College that's been put up for the program by West Virginia Wesleyan College. The next gentleman on the list is recently taking a promotion with the County Commission, and so therefore, he's just going into a leadership program, and they feel this, or leadership role, and they feel this program couldn't really help him succeed with that. The next person works for Van Dehe Hope, but she resides in Upsher County, so she wants to go through the program here. The other, the next individual is a new person to that business, and in Mount Near Food Bank, that's a nonprofit, and he's, I think, newer to this area, so this will be a good experience for him.
You know what, in the presence of time, you don't think you have to do each one of them.
Okay.
I see a time.
Well, we have a lot of people that are going through the program that are either new to their position and going into a leadership role, or a leadership program could help them get to the next level.
That was mine.
Of their position, yes.
My question, right.
And that's the type of people we're looking for. We're not looking for a random person.
What's that for you? You're not either.
Did you reach out to these people? How did you come up with these people? That's what I wanted.
Yes.
You reached out.
So we have an application process. They apply. They're also made to fill out an enrollment sheet, a participation sheet, which commits them to, they know what the requirements are for graduation. It commits them to attending the classes. We have one book that goes along with the program that uses... We have one book that goes along with the program that used to be a lot more than one book, but we have one book that goes along with the program. So, they commit to all that. We not only have the employee or the person, participant, sign that, but we also have their employer sign up participant, so that they know that this person will be out of work for that session each month, and committing to that commitment, so.
Looking, having looked at your previous budget, one, I want to commend you. This is a very professional document. Thank you.
Thank you.
I could tell some thought and effort went into it, and quite frankly, I'm somewhat impressed, I'll be honest.
Thank you.
I have two things, you know, looking at your budget, like space rental is on your budget, you know, we have facilities here in the city. We could even use the Event Center for a class. We need to keep it Mr. Sanders.
Depending on schedule.
Depending on the schedule. I mean, there's things that we could do to address the budget a little bit. That's my one point. Another suggestion is perhaps collaborating with Rotary for your service project or the Plastics.
Yes, that, that could be an idea, and we could meet with Rotary. We've got a few others that are on there right now that we're meeting with on the first day. So, I know we're going to meet with Create Buchanan, we're going to meet with Upsher County Trails, we're going to meet with some different organizations to see about service projects, so that they can get started right away on that for their pitch and decide. But, yeah, we would be happy to work with any organization on a service project, so. I know in the past, they've done career days and stuff. We're kind of looking for more of a hands-on, so that we can see immediately the benefits of that service project out in the community, is what we're kind of looking more for in this new group. We've been working really hard in the last month, 30 days, since it's come onto our desk. We've really been working hard to make this a program that really means something and counts, so.
And the county commission has agreed to do-
The county commission came on as a title sponsor for $2,500, yes.
And how about Community Care?
Community Care and St. Joe's actually upped to the next level. Mountain Hospital is doing all of our media and social media for the program and our website right now. He's really helping out with all of that, since this is new to us.
I'm going to do a 180, because I was against this, you know that.
I know.
But, you've swung it a little bit, or a lot. So, I'll make a motion when you fund, I'll second-
Okay.
For 20, for $2,500.
Yep.
Good job, Tammy.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you.
Hasn't passed yet.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Riggers. We have a second by Mr. Thomas. Is there any further discussion or any other questions for Tammy about this program? All right. At this time, I entertain a motion. It is on the agenda. I draw your attention to line item number 12, and it is letter D. We'll get to the rest of those when we get to that portion of the agenda, to support Leadership Upsher. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed.
I refuse myself because I made a point of saying I was a member of the Board of Directors of the Chamber this year, but I am very supportive of the effort. But, for instance of clarity, I'll refuse myself from the vote.
So, let the, let the minutes reflect that the motion passes unanimously with the note of abstention from Mr. Sanders, as he is a member of the Board of Directors for the Buchanan Upsher Chamber of Commerce. All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right. It does not appear as though we have anyone else signed up to address the council this evening, so we can move on with our agenda. I entertain a motion that we close the public comment section. Motion by Pam, second by Thomas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed, motion carries. All right, now we're on to our, the business portion of the evening. We will begin with our financial report, and Director of Finance, Ambie Jenkins.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, I'm going to give you your balances for your enterprise funds first, and there's several other items on there that we can talk about. Balances for enterprise funds for July 2025. Waste collection board money marketing checking, $1,798,000. CDs and savings at $324,000, and then there's a letter of credit for $64,000 that has to do with the landfill. Water board money marketing checking, $1,116,000. Working capital and savings are at $935,000. Sanitary board money marketing checking, $928,000. Working capital CDs, $496,000. And then, the stormwater funds at $350,000. Down in your packet, I see where you have notes, a note of correspondence for seeking RFPs to financial institutions for the water project. On September 4th, you're going to have a hearing about that. But, in anticipation of allowing loans to go out, seeking loans, we are seeking the rates from them. And I've had several financial institutions call me about that letter that was sent out to them. We sent it out to them. That, that's for $6 million. Purpose of that's for engineering work, acquisition of land for the water treatment plant. Notice is going to put in the paper. That's all I have for that portion. Oh, wait, let me give you your bills. Your bills, they're in the packet. General fund bills, I want to point out to you, we had Jenkins Ford, $4,400 replace the transmission in a police vehicle. $8,800 to PTS Solutions, that's annual police court software. It's not really court software, it's software to keep track of all the police records. With MIR Public Safety is $2,500 for helmets for the fire department. $2,700 to EMC Repair Service, labor parts and labor for truck 1112, engine one and squad one, that's the fire department. State equipment, $8,000, hood and parts, steering column for department vehicle. $10,700 Benjamin Arison for mowing of city logs. $3,900 to ACE Materials for concrete for Pokemonas and Island Avenue projects. $2,100 Grant County Munch for Kiddy Map for the Stalker Youth Center. And then, $13,111, $13,111 to trade boards for building the burn rooms at the Public Safety Complex Training Facility.
The repair on that police vehicle, that was the one we owned or the lease one, right?
No, that's one we own.
That's one we own.
Yeah, it's a vehicle that we own, that actually, we're, it's a spare, and we've been using it for parking, because our parking was for vehicles for sale. So, that's all I have for my report on that.
Okay. Before we get to a couple recommendations from a couple of other boards that are under Ambie's jurisdiction here, I entertain a motion that we approve the payment of our bills. Motion by Jack, second by Randy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed, motion carries. Okay. We have two recommendations, both coming from the Stalker Youth and Community Center Board.
Yes, we have, Stalker Youth Center needs some vehicles. There's, they have, they've received hand-me-down school buses in the past, and then they haven't really been able to get any of those that are worth obtaining. One challenge that they saw with this, these vehicles are breaking down, so they're costing a lot more, and they're getting to where they're not reliable. One of the things that was discussed in the Stalker Youth Center Board was possibility of going to passenger vans where we don't have to hire a bus driver. We also have that challenge, trying to get bus drivers that are certified to drive the large school buses, but other people can drive these passenger vans. So, we checked on the price of those. If we go through our lease program, two passenger vans that hold 15 people each would be about $1,300 a month for each one. So, it would be a total cost of $24,072 annually to be able to obtain these enterprise vehicles. Now, we do have to add a little caveat to that. Even if we go with these, I do have to make sure all the questions were answered with enterprise, because they had several questions about how these vans would be used, who would be being transported in them, and what purpose of was it for those transports. So, I just have to make sure that that's cleared all of their vending, but they did give us a quote for that, and that's the cost, $24,000 a year.
Should we be leasing them?
Yes, that's what we do with our enterprise program now. Almost all of our vehicles, like our police cruisers, almost all of them are leased. And when we turn them back in, we can go four to five years and get the equity out of them before they've lost their value. And then, that goes right back into the next vehicle we lease.
Financial has been very successful, program for today.
We have reliable vehicles all the time.
These are 15 passenger vans?
Yes, two 15-passenger.
You don't need a CDL license to drive them?
No. No.
You get above 15, I believe you do.
Have we talked about insurance?
I mean, they insure our school buses now, and they have, we have a small bus.
But they have to have CDLs to drive the school buses, right?
Yes, they have to have CDLs.
I think we need to check with our insurance provider.
I can, we already do have a small bus that we drive there, and that's not been a problem with them, but I can check with them.
I think, yeah, the qual, no, I'm just thinking of the qualifications of the drivers, you know.
We do records checks on all of our employees every year.
Because I know with the school system, if you have a van, once you have so many students on a, on a van just for transport, you have to have CDLs. So, I don't know if that would carry over to the city or not.
I can, I can double-check with them.
What's, what's the purchase cost for one of these vans? Do you know how they?
I think, I think that, one of the things I'm referencing, we've weighed that out before, and it's been much more financially responsible, physically responsible to lease people, the equity, just end the vehicle at the end of the lease, to trade up to the next.
Yeah, the problem with this is we don't really have equity to turn back in, but they're around $49,000 a piece.
The purchase?
Well, does the program that we use have a type of timeframe on it, like a three or five?
It's about four to five years. We flip them and get equity out of those.
It's part of your barter, no? It's not set like a certain amount of mileage in that certain time?
No, it's usually four to five years.
I got you.
What's your cruisers, are they five, four, five years?
This was passed favorably at the Stalker Youth and Community Center Board, but of course, has to be referred to City Council for its final approval because it is an expenditure. So, what-
I move that we approve this request, knowing that Stalker Youth and Community Center Board has recommended it to City Council. I'll move that we approve it. It's a vital part of our program. We really have great relationships, you know, throughout the county with some of our young participants, but they need transportation, they need safe transportation, and consistent transportation.
Can I second that being on that board or not?
It's the city board, yeah. Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Sanders and a second by Mrs. Buckle. Is there any further discussion or questions relative to the leasing program?
I will, from Mr. Riggers' suggestion, I will put, you know, pending that it clears our insurance requirements and all of the requirements that may have.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed, motion carries. Second recommendation from the Stalker Youth and Community Center Board is to consider a quote from Basement System, or Basement, sorry, Basement Authority of West Virginia for waterproofing and building, the building project.
Yes, that's also been a topic of conversation from the Stalker Board. There's some seepage in the basement of the building, and Ethan went with Basement Authority over there to kind of look to see what could be done to remediate that, and they gave us a quote of $12,323 to correct that problem. We thought we'd have to dig on the outside of the building, and we do not now correct. That'll be a system that's put entirely within it. There was a couple things that, in the agreement that was received by Ethan, that Tom O'Neill needed to look over, the board recommended it to you on the condition that we would check to see if, there's a Section 12 in there about limits of liability. That needs to be addressed before we could sign it. It lists, it describes it's limited liability for the loss and damage only up to the amount that the customer pays. So, they, in essence, would pay for any loss or damages over $12,323, and he agrees that that should be addressed. And then, there was just, oh, I'm not speaking, I'm not the attorney.
No, that's okay. You know, that, that may be, that kind of clause is kind of popping up more and more. You see in kind of standard agreements. That might be a non-negotiable clause with them. It's going to, then it's going to be a matter for the council and the board to decide, is it more important that we get this job done, or is it more important that we get this clause out of this form agreement? You know, we can ask them to take it out, but they can say no. What we don't know too is, is their insurance provider requiring something like this because of the ongoing liability. We all know, the topography of West Virginia and the makeup of the work and what, and what happens here.
For a $10,000 job, and you know, you suddenly have a $50,000 liability on your hands, like who wants that?
Right. I would, I would imagine that their insurance provider is requiring some sort of stop-loss here for them, but we can certainly, yeah, don't ask, don't care.
And did they go around the perimeter of the inside of the basement?
I've had this, I had this done at my own house in town several years ago, and it's a, it's a great, it's a great-
I had it done at my house.
Yeah, we have it near City Hall as well.
Well, Ambie, I'll work on that.
I know it was mentioned at our meeting about a shut-off valve or something, a back- a backflow? Yeah. Yes, I'll, we need to talk to Ethan about that because that would really be, they were concerned that if there was flooding and jawbone. But, the way the systems work, they pump the water up and out. There's not really any backflow of flooding.
Well, to be honest with you though, it's a commercial property, and we require it of every commercial property.
We would have that.
We should do it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we have, we would do the backflow. I think they were concerned about the flooding, jawbone flooding.
I'm just saying, from a, from a, from a PR standpoint and from a, just a, you know, we should do it.
So, this actually isn't a backflow for like a water line, like you're going to get this as a check valve? It's on the gravity line?
Yeah, they thought the water would flow back in from the flooding.
So, do we want to look to approve this conditionally based on what Tom finds out? Or, I'm going to, I'm going to guess, I'm not an attorney, but I spent quite a few years in insurance, and I'm going to guess that that's going to be a non-negotiable. That's just something that they're, for them to remain insurable, I'm going to guess that that's something that they have to do, so. We, Mayor, what I'd recommend that we do is just, we make the ask, and we try to get it out, but the question would be, can, does council approve the agreement even if this stays in? And we'll, we'll do what we can to get it out.
I like the motion. That makes sense.
Okay. So, we, who's?
Me.
Randy, then Pam. Okay, so, the motion will include, the motion is to approve the quote with the, let's see if we can have that clause removed. If not, we're still agreeable to the quote, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to do something.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed, motion carries. Let's just hope they don't get a hold of the minutes and see that we approve it no matter what. So.
Better hurry, Tom.
I gotta hurry too hard, too fast.
I'll try to take that down. I'm behind anyway, so.
All right. We have a recommendation from the CAC Board to accept quotes for a new HVAC system for the main hall. The one we have is, it keeps going out, and I believe it's old and does need to be addressed.
Yep, it's the original unit to the building, and it's been having issues more often. And- And if you're in there and you're watching an event and you have a hundred and twenty people in there, it gets pretty warm pretty quick. So the recommendation was that you would allow quotes to be sought for at this. It'll need some design work too, so, but it'll probably go over the threshold.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation from the CAC Board to seek quotes for an HVAC system upgrade at the, on the main hall?
It's a move.
Motion by Thomas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes on opposed, that motion carries. All right, Ambie, thank you.
Thanks, Ambie.
Up next is our Public Works Director, Mr. Ethan Croston. Hello.
One runs into the other.
Yeah, I'll say this point. So, Street Cruises, we did a couple of small alley entrances off of Fourth Street. And getting close to that on that new project on the Port Marlowe. Hopefully by the end of next week, we'll be talking about moving out of there finally. The on Concon tractor is getting closer to finishing the first run of the curving off of Concon Street. And then, I'm sure most everybody's seen, we did some paving last week. West Virginia paving, this was the first time they'd been in here in a while and part of the contract. They did a good job in all these. It was North Florida, South Florida, West Lincoln, Ohio Street got it. We had previously approved Gate Street. Whenever I went to look at it the next day after the meeting, there were some drop inlets that were in pretty rough shape. So we held off paving it for the time being. We got those repaired. We might, we're gonna try and get that in-house before the end of the paving season. We put a hundred and sixty thousand dollars approximately in this budget, or in this round of paving. Said we'll have approximately two thirty, two forty left. Behind my normal report, there's a page of breakdown of the costs for each street and segment. The Waste Department will have a free dump day on September twentieth for Bakem residents. And the DEP will host a free tire drop-off at the Public Works Complex. They've done that the last few years. It's free to drop those offs.
Send me an email so I can get it on Channel Three's Community Workplace.
And then they're also looking to auction off some equipment. We have several departments looking to do that. The auction will be on September seventeenth. There's a list of equipment behind the normal report also of what we're looking to auction off. And Sewer Department's finished the drop inlets on Gate Street. And we're preparing to replace Mon, or rehab Mon Street's lift station, that's the main lift station for Tenterton. Tim Wilson, I like to mention, he's passed his class thirty wastewater operator course. He's got a little bit of experience to give, but that's a big deal to get that, Pisans. And then Jay Cody, Patesta and I walked the side of Taylor Street, got their ideas. They're gonna be giving us some estimates and more set in stone designs. By the next San Antonio Board meeting for that drainage project. And another interesting fact, we had submitted a I and I report to the DEP. And, and that we track rainfall for the year. So in twenty twenty-four, there was thirty-one point two nine inches of rain. And in the first six months of this year, there was thirty-one point four nine inches of rain. So we had more in six months this year than we did all last year to help explain some of the flooding. I think that's an interesting fact.
And it's really heavy downforce.
Yeah, and if we had eight, eight inches in the rain. The waters continue to work on Mute Street Services. They're getting closer on those. And then we also have Tommy Rollison and Patrick Tenny pass their class thirty water operator course. So we're in pretty good shape with water and wastewater operators, we're doing them for the first time in a few years. And they're also preparing to do a pretty major upgrade on Central Avenue. Zoning code enforcement and still working on a few right-of-way encroachments. Vince and I had to meet with some people in the next couple of weeks about those. And engineering, Jay's continuing to work on two tap programs through North Logan Street and West Main Street. Continuing to assist with the wa, water asset means of program. And continuing to work with the sewer grant, storm sewer application for Taylor Street. We've found some added costs, which is in this particular sense a good thing. You gotta be above this certain threshold for this grant, so. That is all for my normal report. Oh, I like. Dixie handed me an estimate in a very broad scope of a tree project that the mayor mentioned during the last meeting. She handed it to me as I was walking out to help fly for the incident on quarter H, so I didn't get it in the packet. But to summarize, there's a hundred and twenty-six trees that she said would be needed. And the range would be from twenty-one thousand to twenty-four thousand dollars to get all those. If we do it all in one shot, obviously we can do phases, but that will depend on the type of tree.
It's not bad at all. I mean, that's really, that's, that.
I don't know if she had a chance to send it to Circulate yet, but she put together a nice report for it, but it'll be around.
Tell her thank you.
Where would you get the tree spade from?
Um, I'd have to ask her where she got those quotes from.
Yeah.
I didn't, didn't catch that. It's not in her report, but.
I think that's really a necessary project and I, I think we all agree and that's not, I was, I was expecting much worse, but.
Yeah, I'll send that report out so they can look at it and see the recommendations for sizes of trees, type of trees, that type of thing.
Okay.
Ethan, down at the corner of August and Canawa, the one handicap, that red thing, you know, that reddish thing?
Uh, the ADA van?
Yeah, it's coming apart and I think it's gonna be tripping hazard and especially when the weather starts getting slow.
We keep those, we can replace that very easily.
And everything, we need to get that overgrowth of vines or whatever it is off of our mural downtown on Locust Street.
We will probably have to get with the property owner.
Property.
Really?
Yeah, the city does not own that building.
We can't just take it off?
I mean, we need to talk to the property owner first because it's.
Well, it needs to be done because it's overgrowth, it's growing.
It would, the, really the course of action would be to ask the property owner to take, because again, we, we really, regardless of what it is, cannot be improving private property because what we do for one, we have to do for all.
I understand.
And even though it's just pulling vines down, it's a very visible corner. Again, what we do for one, we do for all. And if we're seen doing that, then anybody, Tim could call us and say, I've got some things I want you to take care of at my house.
Well, I understand, okay. So can we ask the property owner to do that?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Well, there are, there are lots, a lot of issues in town where if you get to make a turn, right or left, you have a difficult time seeing whether there's a car coming down that street. And I think people need to alert, you know, us about, and that's something that Vince needs to take a look at.
We have a, a Citizens Total on our website where you can go in and.
Report, report these issues.
Those issues, it becomes part of a computer program and it automatically goes out to the necessary departments to do that. So, I mean, for instance, what we'll do tonight is somebody will want to put that ADA repair deal into the, into that software. And it'd be distributed then, you know, because what I keep saying is, the worst thing you do is write something on a post-it note. And relay it to the next person who relayed it to the next person. So our first course of action is to get it into our system.
Yeah, that was us, because we can get back into that work order and say that it's done.
May I ask a question about that? Is there certain, or promises associated with that? Or does someone report something or they didn't put on the page?
I think, I don't think you have to put your name in, I'm not sure, or you can put.
It doesn't matter to you, it just comes to us, but.
Maybe require that, but I mean, it's an internal document, you know, and I don't know. Not sure what, huh?
There have been leaks with things I've been involved with, not from that.
Okay, okay. All right, nothing perfect, but that is a, a good system.
Yeah.
You know, for us to, again, get, get it into the proper inboxes, so the work actually gets done in an efficient manner.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Ethan?
Thanks, Ethan.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Vincent's here this evening.
That's why Ethan didn't have a lot on my report, because he, he said, you gotta tell your own story.
Why, I didn't know you were here, Vince.
I didn't either. And I will interject with what Ethan talked about there. We do get complaints all the time for site triangle problems. And the Street Department is very good about jumping right on that, taking care of that. So we do that. That's, that's on a weekly basis. Isn't it, Ethan?
What's that?
Button brush down for site triangles.
It's never anything.
I get, I get him all the time on that. So we do that, so just to keep that upfront, okay? All right, moving on. Good evening. You have my permit and wiring in your folder. Also, high grass, we still have people that have to be told to cut the grass. So we still deal with that on a, on a daily basis. And now we have trash cans. The, we thought we had them put in, now a new group of kids come in from the college and, and it starts over again. So we'll have to do some task training on how to put the trash cans. So you will see trash cans for a while till I can get ahead of it and get them used to doing the right thing, okay? All right.
Only can information about Ethan's report.
Yeah. I, I point, he's one. All right, so the main reason I'm here is for zoning application. Let me give you a little background. For re-ruffs, we do permits, but we don't give a permit until you do an asbestos report. So we know that looks good. On electrical, we give permits for that without zoning. But we know that if the power company gives a work request number, I have to go inspect it. So we don't do zoning applications for that. Basement dewatering, like you guys were saying about Stocker. Basement dewatering systems come in, we do zoning on it because we have to know where we're discharging the water. We get Ethan and the sanitary department involved with that to say, yes, it's good to put the water out here or no, we can't put water out there, it'll cause another problem. So we do zoning on that. On driveways, we do zoning. And the reason we do zoning for that is, where do you put it? I work with Ethan to say, Ethan, can the driveway fit in here? He'll say yes or no, it's too close to the corner, no, it's too close to another driveway. So we do zoning for that. Handicap ramps, we do zoning for handicap ramps. We don't charge for that, or we haven't. And that's where I'm going down the road. Handicap ramps will be in our right-of-way. You have to get in our right-of-way in order to get the ADA requirements for the one, one inch on the foot slope to make them ADA accessible. So there's no way, they're gonna be in our right-of-way. Those are not permanent structures, so they are temporary. If we have to go in there, how hard would it be to remove it, to put a line in?
A few bolts.
Yeah, we can do that without a lot of problem. All right, so I'm kinda all right with that, all right? So those are the things that we do currently do zoning for or have checks in place. The ones we don't, the three I'm gonna tell you about. One is when they do wind, we live in an older community, older homes. We do windis. Somebody comes in and says, hey, we wanna do window replacement. What normally happens, I'll go out and say, yes, it has glazing in it, we need to do an asbestos. I'm thinking we probably need to do, once you come in for a zone, for a window, we do zoning. So we go ahead and make that standard procedure, all right? So we know that we're not going to our landfill with asbestos-containing material, all right? So that's the first one. The second one is interior remodeling. We kind of give permits for interior remodeling when the contractors come and get them, of course. I'm thinking we may wanna do zoning on that as well because we can get ourselves in trouble. All right, we need to know whether inside they're removing plaster, they're removing paneling, they're removing drywall. We go in, put our eyes on it, look at it, say, yeah, they're removing drywall, not a problem. Whoop, no, timeout, we're moving plaster here, we could have a problem, let's get it tested. So we bring in, and we have some firsthand inform.
Sure do.
Firsthand information for that. I think we probably need to do zoning on that as well.
I agree.
And this is going to upset some of the residents because the resident will come in. And we try to be real helpful to give them a permit. They'll come in and say, hey, we'll start tomorrow on this project. Well, we try to give them a permit. So we're gonna delay them by a day if we say, whoop, you gotta do zoning. Vincent will be in tomorrow to look at it, he'll come out and look at it.
Only if there's plaster, right? I mean, if it's drywall, there's no, there really, there isn't a problem.
But we, we have to put our eyes on it because residents tend, sometimes don't tell us.
Well, it's for their protection in the long run, too.
And it would be, absolutely right, it would be from their protection. If it's asbestos, they get it out, make dust all over the place. And you got friable asbestos floating around your house, you got, you got a hazardous condition, okay? So that's where we're going with that, with that one. And the last one is on the landscaping. In the past, people would come in and say, hey, we're gonna landscape around the house. Our stance on it was, hey, you're beautifying the city, have at it. Well, landscaping now has turned from mulch and lava rock to retaining walls and patios and pergolas and all kinds of stuff, all right? I'm thinking we need to do zoning on landscaping unless they come in and say, oh, I'm doing this refreshing my mulch.
Randy's got a few ferns hanging, can we, can we give him a zoning application?
Yeah.
I'm your guy right here. I'm your test.
I mean, if you, if you're doing more than throwing a little mulch on top of the mulch you already have, I believe we need to do zoning. And some of us know the reason we're going with this, we've run into a problem. We had a gentleman come in and say, hey, I'm doing some landscaping. We said, have at it, you're making the place look good. Comes to find out, I get Ethan involved and we have a, we have a twenty-five foot new driveway along with the thirty-five foot driveway that's already there. So I think we need to probably get ahead of this, get in front of it so it doesn't happen to us again, okay?
Yeah, make it be mine ahead of it or in front of it.
Well, whatever you want. Get behind me. But anyway, that, that, that's where I'm at tonight to ask you two things. Do you wanna do zoning for basically everything that we do? And charge for that zoning, the zoning application is twenty dollars, okay? Our permitting structure is from zero to one hundred at flat ten dollar fee. So sometimes if somebody, and I did it a week ago, I think, moving an existing storage building, turning the orientation of the storage, storage building. So they have no money in it, they're just turning the storage building. I said, all right, no charge. Teresa said, well, we're supposed to charge ten dollars. So that's where I'm going with it.
You didn't go back and get the ten dollars?
I did, no.
But you pitched it in.
So anyways, that's the direction I'm looking for. Do we wanna put zoning out there for everything and then make no permits free? The ADA ramp, we don't charge for that. Do we want to? Do we want to go along with that or do you want to charge a $10 fee for that?
For an ADA ramp?
Yeah. I was always under the impression, let's not do it. But I think we need to, for our records, we need to charge at $20 for the zoning. So when they come in and say, here's going to be my ramp. Here's what I'm doing. It's going to come out in your right of way. So then we know, I'll get with Ethan to say, yes, it's not going to be an obstruction. So I think we charge at $20 for that and give them the permit for free on the ADA ramps. As long as the ADA ramp complies with the one inch on per foot.
It only makes sense if they're encroaching on our right of way. Just go ahead and do it.
Okay. So what are we doing with all the other zoning?
Well, I definitely think the interior remodel, because you're right, we've got an old, there's a lot of older homes in town. And I will say from my own experience, it was very nice peace of mind getting that report back, knowing that that did not contain asbestos. Because if it did, I don't know what I'd have done. Because, and if you're like me, and I'm not home all day and I'm at work and I've got a contractor working on something in my house and they just start working on something and then all of a sudden it's, there's dust everywhere because tiles were removed. I, you know, I didn't know, once that dust went circulating, if that was asbestos positive dust or not. So that obviously created a lot of, a lot of heartburn on my end and prevented me from even living in my house at all until that was taken care of because I, we didn't know. And so then when the report came back, I felt much, much better, knowing that I just had some cleanup to do, but, from the work, but knowing that it was safe. So I, there's entirely too many homes in Buchanan that were built in the same era that mine was built versus the brand-new construction.
And yours could have come either way.
It had gone either way.
Yeah.
1948 is right on the, it could have gone either way.
Much faster, but yes.
So I think that one for sure, even if we did nothing, if we didn't do any other ones, I think that one for sure. And I realize that it's going to take some, you know, training of our, of people to maybe plan, plan a little bit more ahead. Because here's the thing, projects don't just happen overnight. No, I don't think. I didn't, I didn't wake up on Thursday morning and say, oh, I'm going to rip out the bathroom today. Maybe that happens. I don't, I would, and maybe there are, you know, a small percentage of instances where that does happen. If you're already a skilled handy person and you just, you've got time to do it, you just do it. But if you're like me and you've got to coordinate it and plan it and get on someone's schedule, you know that's not, that didn't just happen. So it should, you should have the amount of time to get all the ducks in the row if you're working with a contractor.
Well, and landscaping too. You do a zoning application, show us what you're doing. And then I'll know down the road, the wife comes in and says, well, hey, this looks great. Why don't we go ahead and do that over here? Whoa, that's not on the zoning application, but we can add it on the existing one. But at least we know. We know where it is. We know if it's an encroachment on our right of way. We know what it is. I'll, I know landscaping projects evolved. This looks good. Let's do a little bit more here. I know that. But we got to make sure they stay off our right of way.
So, so the mayor said you don't just jump up on Sunday morning and start to do a kitchen. But you may jump up on Sunday morning and decide to go to Lowe's and buy half a dozen bags of mulch.
And some timber. And the mulch, if you're, if you're just throwing new mulch down, refreshing your mulch, have at it. Go do it. I don't have a problem with that. If you're buying timbers and a retaining wall and pavers, you might have walked up, you might have woke up Saturday morning and said, I'm going to do mulch. But I don't think you're going to do it.
Right, right. As long as we're not, my point was, as long as we're not getting reports in saying, hey, my neighbor went to Lowe's and bought five bags of mulch and I saw them out there putting mulch over their old barn. You're going to get a barn. You know, as long as that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't think anyone here wants to hinder that.
Maybe, maybe people, maybe people do broadly brush it and say that that, their retaining wall is landscaping. Retaining wall is construction. That's not landscaping. So I mean, I, how often does it happen to where land, to where that is blurred?
All the time. If people want to put in a fire pit, they'll do a fire pit, make a level spot, put some retaining walls around. Put the pavers down, put the fire pit in. It happens. They're, they're all over Buchanan. People do that all the time.
But that's not, that's not, that's in my mind, I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of a construction project. Like a big, you know, retaining wall that requires, you know, earth moving and a driveway put in. And that's what I'm, I'm not thinking of. To me, a fire pit, that's not.
Well, but you leveled your lot. Most lots in Buchanan aren't perfectly level. So if you do a two-foot to make your lot, your area level, you're going to have a two-foot retaining wall.
And that might get on our right of way.
Well, it could. It could, depending on how far out you come.
Don't most people know where their property line is?
No.
No.
No, they don't.
Not a clue. More reason to pass something.
Right, well, but I think you need number four on here. Won't be telling you what that would be? That you have to have, see how much junking put up in front of your yard.
The answer is no.
You know what I'm talking about.
That's what's key.
That's landscaping.
Here's what, here's, people may know more on what's on side to side of them. What they do not realize is what's in front of them. There is a major setback of what everyone thinks they own to the street. And they don't. And we've run into that time and time again. You know, there's, there's a lot of encroachment on our right of ways or a lot of potential encroachment on our right of ways on the front of people's houses. Because they do not realize that they don't own all the way to the street. Especially if your street doesn't have a sidewalk.
And the side yard, you're not bad because your neighbor will say, whoa, whoa, wait a minute. You're close to my line, you know, my, my father told me right here was the line. So they kind of work that out, neighbors side by side. What the mayor's saying, the front and the rear, they have no clue.
Because there's-
We have an alley in the back, our alley's from 12 to 16 feet, you know.
Well, there's paper alleys all over town too that also count as. We've got a lot of stereos we can, we can go through here. But bottom line is, what would it take for us to, if we approve or we agree, we should recommend zoning permits for these elements? Then what's the next step?
You tell me. That's what we're doing. We'll make that procedure.
I am nervous about the landscaping. I think that's just going to, I think that's going, people, people are going to run with that and be like, you mean to tell me, as we know, Katie Kuba, they don't read the newspaper articles. So they'll see the headline, you know. Were you saying they read those? Because you didn't call him out. Well, they're not as diabolical as my Buchanan's headlines are. So I'm concerned. That's what I mean. It would be defined in the article.
That was hurt.
Make a headline out of that, Katie.
All right, I'm going to read something that Vincent said as your concerns. The reason that we're talking about landscaping is not because it's important that landscaping be reviewed by zoning. It's that people are calling, coming in here and saying they are doing landscaping and they're doing much more than that. We're dealing with an active situation right now where somebody came in, said, oh, I'm doing landscaping. And they poured a huge concrete slab in front of their house that is encroaching across their property line into the, into the city street. Because they came in and called that landscaping. So what it would enable us to do is say, is to catch intents like that. Maybe we could do a thing where if it's, if it's a landscaping and it's reviewed and it turns out there is no zoning implication, that the application fee could be refunded. Perhaps that way it's not going to cost somebody anything to really do it. But it still allows the zoning officer and others in City Hall to just put eyes on what people are intending to do with their property to ensure that it doesn't implicate the zoning ordinance.
I like that.
Something to concern.
Yeah.
I like that.
I'm just curious, is it, do we have more teeth in effect? If they were to have and paid for a zoning permit and then lied about what they did and then put in concrete, what would be our course then?
Well, we don't, I don't want to dive into this because this is an active situation.
Yeah, I understand.
But ultimately, you know, the individual's going to have to remove the offending construction.
With the drawing that they gave us on the back of the zoning application, it says what we're doing. If we go out there and it says they did more than I approved, they're guilty.
Yep, right.
They're guilty.
So the situation that you highlighted, new driveway and retain, that no permit was, was, was-
It was landscaping. No, because it was called, because it was called landscaping in the desk.
And it wasn't.
And it's, no, it was not.
But, but did, did they say what space it would cover their landscaping? I mean, what space width-wise or whatever? Did it tell any kind of footage or anything?
No, they got, they got nothing. It said, we don't charge for landscaping. We never have. So you, you come in and say, hey, I'm going to landscape. We say, all right, have at it. Make your property look pretty. So we had nothing in writing of what this gentleman was going to do but landscaping.
So since we don't have anything in writing, can he not still yet keep it?
Well, no, because he's, no, because he's encroaching across his property line. And this would catch things like that too.
Okay. All right, well, we're all over the map here. But what, what are we, what are we, are we clean sweeping it and saying yes to, everything requires a zoning permit? Or are we cherry picking?
I think you need to define that landscaping.
What, how would you like to define it? What would you say?
If you're putting down some mulch, you know.
And we'll say that if it's, if it's mulch. And even if you say, I'm going to plant trees. All right, we go through the city now. We've got trees. How often, Ethan, that we have trees that are 10 years old now? And now they're a problem because they were planted right on the line. They've encroached over on us.
Yeah, we've got that issue.
We have that all over the city. So we need to know, if you're planting a tree, get it back on your property. Where it's not going to be in five years down the road, it's not going to be a problem.
Well, can you put permanent, permanent, I don't know how you work that.
Well, you want it only for everything, basically, except for mulch and all.
I think we're at the point, I think we're at the point where we have to do it. And I like the idea, if we don't run into any problem saying, if it qualifies for a refund, we'll refund you money.
It's true landscaping.
It's true landscaping. We will refund your money as long as they don't come out in six months. Well, that's not fair. You know, everybody has to pay to play, pay to play. I like that idea. But I do think that we are at a point in time where too many liberties are being taken. And the definition, your definition and my definition are totally different. You know, you can argue all day long that all that concrete was landscaping. In your mind, you're convinced and you'll go down fighting that that was landscaping.
I agree. I agree it's not landscaping.
I don't agree with you.
I don't mean to keep speaking of the issue that's happening, but it was in this gentleman's best interest to do a zoning permit because of what's happening right now.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll end up costing him a lot less than what it will down there.
$20.
I mean, for, yeah, for $20, he, you're, we're probably talking $5,000, $6,000.
So at 8:25 in the evening coming up on that, I would recommend, I would be comfortable clean sweeping it with that or my landscaping.
Clean sweep it then.
Clean sweep it. Yep, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Well, that's, do we, that needs to be motioned because it is a change. So who is, who wants to motion that we require zoning application for essentially all projects? And then if the project, it turns out to be just general landscaping or maintenance of property, we will refund the zoning application fee. Motion by Randy, is there a second? Second by Rob. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like some opposed. Motion carries.
Oh, I meant to say aye.
Any other questions?
Well, I just want to make one comment. It's your birthday Monday. Happy birthday, is it?
Thank you.
He's 68 years old. He's an old man. He's been 68 before.
You were there once, David. All right.
I don't remember that.
Too long ago. Okay. Up next.
Oh, we got to prove this building in market.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I then came motion that we approved the building and wiring permits in your packet. Motion by Scott, second by Thomas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like some opposed, motion carries. Now, ready for Police Chief Matt Gregory, who's had a busy day.
Just a little bit. Got a little sun. Yeah, it's been hot out today. Hello? It's actually, it's still an ongoing situation. Route 33 remains shut down because of the incident. We're keeping a status on, we've had some overlap, backup assistance from DOH to help with traffic. East or westbound traffic has been diverted along Morton Avenue, going to shut down.
Earlier today, it was on Main Street. So if anybody ever wanted to remember what it was like in Buchanan before a corridor went through here, they should have been down here about 2 o'clock this afternoon.
Yeah, the birds were shut down. We actually brought mutual aid in from Lewis County to help with traffic at the courthouse. But hats off to all of our city departments. They've worked tremendously well today, during the day. Big beating the fire department, Ethan, all the utility guys. And we appreciate everybody here at City Hall. Randy, thanks for getting the information out to the public. So just a really good display of teamwork on behalf of all of our city departments. So it really helped things today. So in addition to that, just a few things to report on under my regular report, Mayor. The police department will be participating in a tabletop exercise in conjunction with Wesleyan College on August 26. This is something that we routinely do with the college in a continued effort to test our emergency plans and work together on public safety. Mr. Sanders, I didn't have, obviously didn't have time to get my report, my activity into the packet. I will make sure Teresa gets it so you can have the information. The police department will be hosting Michelle Baughman, who will be an intern for the fall 2025 semester. She's a senior in the program of justice major at West Virginia Wesleyan College. We've also received notification, and this has been in the works for some time, from the DOH, that the speed limit on Marion Street is now 25 miles per hour. That is in effect as of now. The speed limit signs have been placed at the entrance to Marion Street from Route 20 as well as, as you cross the Poe Bridge. There are a couple of other signs as you get closer to the Camden Avenue intersection. So again, that is in effect as of right now, 25 mile per hour speeds at on Marion Street.
What was it before?
It was 35. It's down to 25.
That's good.
It was originally 25 a number of years ago and it was moved up to 35 for several years, but.
You say that's effective now that it's effective today?
Yes.
So new release went out, it could be added up to today's date?
Correct, yeah. And well, the director from the DOH was, they didn't put a date on it. They said effective as soon as the signs went up. The signs are up today. So we have afforded that information to our officers to, to be aware of. Typically with any type of legality change with traffic laws, we do have a period of warnings unless obviously, of course, the violation is excessive. But the officers have been made aware of the situation. One other thing to report on, and this is something that we've talked about at different points in time at council concerning the traffic, primarily along Smithville Street, the adjacent streets as they approach the Academy School for pickup, both before school starts and really primarily after school. So with school back in session, we do continue to patrol that area. I did make some observations and gather some data regarding this traffic that I'd just like to share with council just so that we obviously were well aware that it's a congested area. We've received a lot of complaints. We've received a lot of complaints about the congestion, but we went and gathered some actual hard data concerning that that I'd like to share with council. So, on one particular occasion here just recently, I monitored traffic in the area with the assistance of some of our officers and noted the following. At approximately 2:50, 5:00 PM, 24 cars were observed lined up and waiting for the school day to end. So, this is approximately 20 minutes prior to the end of the school day. These cars were mostly on Smithville Street and they were parked in spots alongside the road. So, they were not actually in the traffic lane, but parked as you would park a car at the side of the road. There were a few cars on Victoria Street and one observed on Hard Avenue, and it was observed that the roads remained passable at that time. At 3:15 PM, when school let out, an individual from the Academy School opened up the parking lot to allow cars to enter the parking lot. Prior to this, cones are placed in front of the parking lot disallowing any entry into their lot from the street. So, at 3:15, cones were removed and cars were allowed to enter to begin picking up their kids. It was observed that the lot can hold approximately 21 to 22 cars as currently designed, and that depends on the size of the car. The lot filled up within five minutes at 3:20, leaving the rest of the vehicles in a queue, waiting their turn for the lot to free up space for more cars. So, while this queue occurred, obviously there were stoppages in traffic. All told, we observed 87 cars in the queue entering the Academy School parking lot to pick up kids. As I mentioned earlier, when the lot fills up and the queue pauses, there were three specific pauses in traffic because of the lot filling up, again, causing vehicles primarily on Smithville Street and some on Victoria Street to back up. This is probably the height of the congestion when they were waiting in queue because they're actually out in the traffic lane or some of them would stay somewhat to the right, to the side, but they're in traffic waiting to progress to a singular point at the Academy School. The pauses occurred at 3:20 PM, 3:26 PM, and 3:35 PM and lasted approximately 45 minutes each. While traffic remained congested around this area, it was observed that traffic not in the queue continued to flow. So, vehicles, even though in queue, were over enough to allow the road to remain passable. I did notice that Smithville Street allowed cars to pass both ways, north and south on Smithville Street, as well as at least one way on Victoria Street, albeit slowly and cautiously. From our patrols, it was further observed that traffic was also passable, as I said, on Victoria Street. So, as soon as I came back in, and this was completely unsolicited, but as soon as I came back in and was gathering my notes, I received a call from the principal of Tenerton Elementary, who reported to me that on an average day, they have approximately 50 cars in their pickup line. So, I know that's been discussed, possibly adding Tenerton students to the Academy Elementary. So, if we have 87 cars on this given day of observation. Now, that's not, it ebbs and flows. Some days are busier than others. This particular day was this past Friday, and so it was one of the rather busier days. But, and again, the exact count will ebb and flow, but adding approximately 50 to that certainly will continue to make it congested. As I've stated before, I really concluded that this is an infrastructure problem. Obviously, it is congested. Traffic does move slowly and cautiously, but with everybody trying to get at the, especially at the end of the day, because you have a little more leeway in the morning, when people arrive at different times dropping their kids off, but at the end of the day, they're really in essence coming there within that 30-minute window when traffic is really backed up from 3:15 to about 3:45. The traffic cleared up by 3:45 on the streets. So, all kids, or at least all vehicles, were in the lot to pick up their kids. So, it was about 30 minutes at the height of its congestion. And again, it really remains an infrastructure problem with all these people trying to get to the same place at the same time. They're really turning the city streets, especially when they're in queue, into a parking lot. And so, the ultimate solution obviously would be to have a larger parking area if that many cars are trying to get to the same place at the same time to pick up their kids to accommodate getting them off the streets and still allowing them to pick up their kids. So, Mayor, that's just some facts that we were, some data that we were able to gather. Just wanted to share with council tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And you'll include those, too?
Yeah, they're in the report.
Any questions or comments for Chief Gregory?
I will say, just...
Yeah, you're good.
I will say, for some reason, the first five days of school or whatnot, there hasn't even been, so with your counting right there, there's nothing what it normally is like. It's usually twice as bad, which accounted. There hasn't been, yeah, there hasn't been an issue. It's been quick, it's been flowing, like it's a lot. Once, I don't know what happens if kids aren't going to school yet or with the normal traffic, it's double what is there. It's a parking lot all the way down. I mean, you've seen it before when you've driven there. So, I really haven't even noticed an issue.
Yet.
Yet. I mean, for some reason now, so when you're looking at those numbers, it's not indicative of what the real people are really complaining about.
I think one thing that can aggravate the issue, and we've seen this in the past, is weather, particularly winter weather. It can make it a lot more challenging because when you have a lot of snow at the side of the road, we've seen this in just this past winter. Whereas cars are able to get farther over to the right, both before traffic begins to move and once it's in queue, they're still even, like I said, even though they're in queue, they're still over to the right to allow passable traffic. When snow backs up, what we found, it narrows the lane, so that's made challenges with that. I think we've seen some heightened complaints with those types of issues.
But I don't even think there's been anyone past our house this year, where usually it's another two blocks down the road for some reason. I mean, that's, so I'm just saying, what you guys saw or recorded isn't indicative of what the issues are, the highest people are handling.
Yeah, like I said, it does ebb and flow and there are times it's heightened. We see that toward the end of the week, we see that around holidays.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Chief Gregory? You'll note in the packet, there is the notice of the RFP for the third-party towing and storage services for community events. If you'll remember, we have to look at this again because the company that was selected before is actually no longer in business, so we have to go back out to look for an option. That is in your packet.
I will add to that, that I just recently checked on this. There has, just as of the last few days, has not been any interest on this. I did have the occasion to speak with at least one of the owners of a local tow company, just about the response to the RFP, and the feedback that I got was basically unwilling us to commit.
I mentioned to the chief, too, that, you know, maybe we can reach out to those companies and just ask if they're really looking closely at that RFP, that there is a minimum that the city is willing to pay to engage them for those efforts. In other words, if we said arbitrarily, it's bigger, $500, but you'd be guaranteed a $500 event fee for that opportunity. If you tow someone and you charge them $150, that comes off what the city would pay. It would drop down to $350, you know? It could disappear. But I can understand a business person, you know, considering whether or not they want to tie up something out of rotation, take it out of rotation, take it off the inventory to make profits and freeze it up for a couple of hours and potentially not make any money. That could be a concern if anyone had an investment in business, so, you know, perhaps we can get, check with some of those owners, again, more than just one, but all those owners and see if they're understanding the RFP.
Okay. Agreed.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Hopefully, you get some sleep tonight. Yeah.
Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things for the council tonight, and I'll be brief. We have a situation where we have a case in municipal court where both the municipal court judge, Judge Eckert, and the mayor both have to refuse themselves from the case. We have an ordinance that provides for this situation. Basically, the council can name a substitute municipal judge for this case, and asks that the council consider appointing City Recorder Randy Sanders. This is for City of Buchanan versus Martin Elliott Tenny. I don't recall what the nature of the case is. Obviously, I don't know if it was a cell phone, use the cell phone while driving or a speeding ticket or what. It's some minor moving violation, and with your indulgence, we'd like to have Randy act as judge in that case.
Well, I would entertain that motion. Are you motioning?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Please second it.
No, who's?
Oh, I thought you made the motion.
No, I'm asking for the motion.
Oh, okay.
So, Scott makes the motion, who's seconding?
I'll do it.
Okay, Pam. All right. So, there's a motion by Scott, second by Pam. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Yeah, that's why.
I figured you'd go, no.
You have to.
It's easier for the audience, like you.
Thank you, and I'll work with you by scheduling, scheduling with Teresa. We'll get your role and everything.
Please do.
Really? No, 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 no. Not really. All right. Now, next item of business, the council has before it an ordinance number 475 of the City of Buchanan and ordinance amending ordinance number 438, providing for the processes by which municipal purchasing shall take place, allowing the use of certain service cooperatives in purchasing. The purpose of this ordinance that the council has before it is that the West Virginia Department of Administration maintains a shared service, shared purchasing website. Our purchasing ordinance allows for the use of that without a bid. What we'd like to do is expand the purchasing ordinance to allow for the use of other states' service cooperatives as well. This expands the number of items that can be purchased online in a competitive way. These are already vetted, and these are, these service cooperatives are actually organized by state governments. The one in particular that we're really looking at using is actually, was founded by the Minnesota Legislature. So, this just takes our existing process, just opens it up a little bit. Be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. O'Neil? We've been talking about this and it's now to a point where it's at a, it's a first reading.
I like the motion.
We have a motion by Randy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like some opposed.
Finally, I received a proposal back from American Legal Publishing on moving forward on their qualification. Their estimate is that it'd be just under $14,000 to finish that, which is about what I kind of expected it to be. It would take about 11 months to do, and then at the end, we have a continuing commitment for $600 a year for them to host the online searchable version of that. You don't have to vote on it tonight. I have, I didn't get the written proposal in time to have it on the agenda for this meeting, so it will be on the agenda for the meeting in two weeks for your formal action, but I just want to let you tee that up and let you know that it's not...
Very good.
All right. That is all that I have.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. The mayor stepped out, so there, I'll just kind of take him from here until he's back. Under 11, there is no old business to discuss. Well, new business, I think we'll wait for the mayor on this because he's presenting a, which is, has to do with the partnership with the City of Elkins and the West Virginia Division of Tourism, out-of-area promotions. There, you got feedback. Okay. Oh, you'll cheer back to the mayor. New business.
All right. Thank you. Actually, yes, I do.
Okay.
Sorry. Yeah, I do. I made a list and then I wasn't thinking. Okay. So, these are, actually, these are from the Revenue and Expense Review Committee meeting earlier this week, and so I want to talk to you about all of them. I mentioned a couple of weeks ago about a potential partnership with the City of Elkins and the West Virginia Division of Tourism for out-of-area promotions. Mayor Marco came over on Tuesday, and we met and talked about this. There is, so here's what's going on. He spoke with Chelsea Ruby, who is the State Division of Tourism Director. She reports directly to the governor of West Virginia. There is an opportunity for dollar-for-dollar matching promotion through the Division of Tourism that would market specifically this area, Elkins and Buchanan, in the heavily populated greater Washington DC metro area, specifically to Tyson's Corner, where there are folks with a lot of expendable income that we want to attract over here to spend money and visit our area. Mayor Marco and I have long spoken about how Elkins has a good two or three days worth of activities for you to take on. Buchanan, Upstate County have a good two or three days of activities to take on. Together, we have a week that we could, you know, keep a family in the region. The Division of Tourism would do all the heavy lifting on this. It would be about $6,000 of contribution from the City of Buchanan. It's based on population. About almost $7,000 in contribution from the City of Elkins, again, based on population. And then the Division of Tourism would kick in about $13,000 to make this work, based on our contribution. They would do the heavy lifting. They would work with the Upstate County CBB. They would work with the Elkins Randolph County CBB to get graphics and to get information about our area to put together a really nice, pretty ad campaign over in that area. It also would include radio. It would include additional visual advertisement in addition to what you see in the packet. But this seems like a really good opportunity to, one, work together with a neighboring city; two, collectively promote a region that is, quite frankly, underserved by the West Virginia Division of Tourism. And then that would go into point number three of, we want the Division of Tourism to see us as a place to promote. And us putting in buy-in would give them a reason to start looking at this area as a serious place to promote. Right now, what they have focused on so far has been the New River Gorge, Davis Thomas, Harpers Ferry, Summersville Lake, and that's pretty much it. They've not really promoted any other area outside of those regions heavily, but this is an opportunity. So, the Revenue and Expense Review Committee was supportive of this and recommended to council in a positive manner that we commit to partnering with the City of Elkins and the Division of Tourism to work on this ad campaign for the Tyson's Corner greater Washington DC area.
I think it's a great idea, but I see they're targeting July, August, so we're talking about next year, maybe, doing this?
This, he's had, this has been for a while. He's had this for a little while. So, I don't know that you can take...
It will be adjusted.
It would be adjusted, yeah.
Okay. And it is for a short amount of time, like a month, that they want to do the advertising?
I believe so, yeah. But I think it would be a good idea for us to try it, see how it works, and then the Division of Tourism would measure the matrix on it as to how it's being received.
Right. And how much money from us?
About $6,000.
It's approximately a dollar per, based on the residents, right?
Yeah.
Population, I'm sorry.
I think it's a good idea myself, so I know the area, so I think it'd be great.
And again, this is not bypassing or overstepping our local CBB. This is a tool that the two cities would then basically unlock to be able, for our CBB and their CBB, to work with the Division of Tourism to promote us.
Well, I think it's something, you know, as a member of the CBB board, we've had drawn leaps and bounds with Lacey Ramsey, who's here tonight, who's our director, and has been doing a very good job, very aggressive in her, in her movements. It'll give her another tool, and her toolbox as well, works towards some other items, other possible partnerships, but I'm really excited about this, and I think this will be a great one for us to have on, in our arsenal.
Would the game farm be one of those things, would you?
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure. That's, that's a very heavily traveled area down there. In fact, you know, I'm talking, I think I mentioned it the last meeting, we want to do some more collaborations with the Wildlife Center down in the southern part of the county. It attracts a lot of people, and we can benefit from their traffic. But yes, it would be all of our, everything that we have to promote would be promoted, so. Us and Elkins Randolph. Okay, so I entertain a motion that we approve our portion of, of participation with this, up to, up to $6,000 with the Division of Tourism and the City of Elkins.
This will be on an annual basis?
Well, we're, this is on a, we're going to try this and see, and see how it, see how it works.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion by Randy, a second by Jack. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed, motion carries. Next, still staying with the theme with the CBB, if you'll recall, when Lacey provided her annual report a few weeks ago, we asked her to compile a list of some things that might be needed, tangible improvements for the Upstate County CBB office to help make her job more efficient and effective. Some of the technology that she has been using is very outdated, and so the Revenue and Expense Review Committee discussed her proposal, excuse me, requesting some equipment upgrades, and we were supportive of $2,500 to invest with the CBB to help with equipment upgrades at her office. And so that's the recommendation from the, from that committee to hear, based on Lacey's response to our request of providing insight on what is needed.
Can I make the motion?
Second.
My motion by Jack, we have a second by David. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed, motion carries. This does not interrupt or take the place of, or change our, the pass-through that we have with our hotel motel tax revenue. This is, this is an additional assistance for better equipment.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure thing. But we also said in the meeting that we, we hope that maybe our friends at the County Commission would also consider any upgrades that you might need as well, you know, so.
I have no problem asking for help.
Sure. Don't ask, don't get.
Exactly.
Next, I want to draw your attention, and I brought this up at the Revenue and Expense Review Committee. I laid this on your desk, and for the benefit of Mr. Thomas, I'm going to, I'm going to skim through it very quickly, since this is new. But through the municipal conference this year, I learned about, about a program that a couple of other communities are doing to help with invigorating small business in their, in their communities. So, here's, here's, here's my pitch. Through the collaborative efforts of the City of Buchanan, Upstate County Development Authority, Buchanan Upstate Chamber of Commerce, the Small Business Development Center, and West Virginia Westland College, our community seeks to provide necessary support to encourage the entrepreneurial spirit by fostering a healthy and attractive environment for small businesses to begin, grow, and thrive. The City of Buchanan seeks to invest a sum of $25,000 with the Upstate County Development Authority to assist new small business owners with overcoming the costly startup expenses often associated with business, with business creation. The upfront financial burden of security deposits, lease, leases, utility, and insurance payments, marketing, and inventory purchases happening all at once can be prohibitive and detrimental both to the business in its infancy stages, as well as to its long-term success and sustainability. Similar to the facade, the successful facade grant program already in effect, here are the parameters proposed for this program. The business must be new or less than one-year-old. Existing tenured, long-term, or well-established businesses are not eligible to receive grant funding. Located within, within property, properly zoned areas of the City of Buchanan, within the city limits. Be registered with both the Secretary of State and the City of Buchanan. Have a physical, that is bricks and mortar, location. Online and home-based businesses are not eligible to receive grant funding. Be a for-profit retail restaurant or service providing in nature. Law firms, insurance agencies, financial advising firms, accountants, banks, and nonprofit organizations are not eligible to receive grant funding. To receive grant funding, a new business must be, must complete a full application packet. Items needed are listed, I'll go over there in just a second, and submitted to the Upstate County Development Authority. A committee will be established, including the Upstate County Development Authority Executive Director, Mayor of the City of Buchanan, Buchanan Upstate Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, local Small Business Development Center Coach, established local small business owner, West Virginia Westland MBA student, and representative from a local bank. These individuals will be called upon to review the applications on as-needed basis when submitted. The committee will vet the business plan and determine a grant, if the grant approval status is to take place. The, a complete application should include business information, name, address, type of business, business license, both state and city, completed business plan, or a complete business plan, I should say, including financial projections, that is, expenses and income, copy of lease contract, proof of insurance, request for funding amount, narrative showing how the funds will be used, proof of expenses, receipts for, for reimbursement, and a signed promise to provide a report back to the funding organization. Upon receiving a complete application, proper vetting by the committee and approval, the grant funds will be distributed on a dollar-for-dollar basis, and specifically for expenditures outlined in the application proposal. A maximum cap of $5,000 is established for each new business. Eligible business, eligible, eligible expenses under the grant include lease and security deposit payments, utility hookups and payments, marketing, purchase of point-of-sale system, inventory, furniture, fixtures, and/or equipment necessary for the business operations. At the end of the grant, for each business where the assistance was provided, the business owner will provide a final report to the Upstate County Development Authority illustrating how the funds made starting a new business possible. If a new business receives grant funding through this program but cannot remain open for one full year, grant funds must be reimbursed to the Upstate County Development Authority. At the conclusion of one year, the Upstate County Development Authority Executive Director will provide a comprehensive report to the council of the City of Buchanan, showing the financial investment provided to each new business. Small businesses are the backbone of every community, creating a healthy environment that encourages business growth, enhances economic vitality of the city and region. The goal of this program is to establish Buchanan as a small business incubation city, where entrepreneurs are supported and new businesses can grow and thrive. Utilizing the wealth of local resources found within the collaborative organizations mentioned, the mission of, of the committee is to ensure strong, well-thought-out, profitable, sustainable, and, and positive business growth through both financial and experience-related mentorship support from, of new business owners. So Lewisburg does something like this, as does the City of Wheeling, and they both use their development authorities for, for the, as the, as the pathway, as the conduit to, to help this work. Again, this is very similar to our facade grant program. We invested money there through the Development Authority to help with improvement of facades in the community. This would be, again, within city limits only, and it would be to help us grow our small business economy here locally.
Going down the rabbit hole here, if something, if we were to start it, would it have the opportunity to have other people invest in this program? I'm just thinking of particular organizations who may say, we're willing to put $10,000 into this as well. I guess you'd have the, I mean, I guess the answer to that is, that organization would have to determine if they're eligible to do that, work it out with the UCDA.
Right.
Then, right?
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, to me-
This could be the seed.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would we be working any with the SBA?
Yes, the Small Business Development Center would, would be a big part of this.
And I question whether the $5,000 amounts enough?
Well, I hear you, but I mean, we've got to also think about-
Trying to help as many as possible.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah. If we're looking at $25,000 initially, seed money, that's five business opportunities we maybe, you know, we would be able to help on a maximum basis, unless we got other people.
I think they did this a long time ago, because I got one. They helped me when I first opened up.
City of Buchanan?
How long ago was it?
It was, I'm sure it was the Development Authority, because Melody Stempel worked there. So that was a long time ago. That helped me. Yeah. There were, you know, there were four of us working, so it had to be more than one person working.
If it tried out, and the $25,000 is utilized to its full potential, then I think maybe investing more next time could definitely be on the table, too. My only comment here is just the, limiting to new or less than one-year-old, you're obviously going to get a lot more. I understand putting that in there to protect from people just getting upgrades to their old, old businesses, but I feel there could be a little leeway there, maybe, to, because you're going to have a lot of more people that are going to go for this with an older-
Well, I think-
A building that's more than a year old.
I'm sorry?
A building that's likely more than a year old.
A building?
It's a business.
Business.
New or less than one or year old, okay. Yeah, yeah, a business.
I think, I think what we're looking at is trying to attract new businesses.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, to try to boost, you know, we have some openings in town, empty buildings that are being utilized, so I think that's probably the basis.
Right, right.
I mean, if there are some new businesses, less than a year old, they'll be able to, to submit an application, so.
I'm all for this. I was in a similar situation where people stepped up and helped me with advice, with monetary. You know, and I like the fact that, the compilation of who's going to be, there's enough key people there, they have enough experience across all gamuts to be able to offer something to the new businesses and the seed businesses. The only thing I would caution about is knowing about how many SBA loans fail, and, and I understand what Dave, what you're saying, $5,000 isn't a lot of money, so the bad thing is, if they weren't able to repay it, it's not that big of a loss, but to just watch people, because I know the SBA lost a lot, we have to be vigilant about, you know, what you're saying, and I don't know that if they're out of business, if they're going to be able to reimburse Upstate County Development.
I think that's, I mean, it's like to have that pause in there, but if they put a bank emergency-
Yeah, I hear you.
Right.
I, and I agree with, but I will, I will say, as, as someone who deals with the SBA quite frequently through my position at First Community Bank, SBA's tough. I mean, they, they, I mean, the, the fees associated with an SBA loan are, they're almost to a point where, is it even worth, you know, going SBA route versus just looking for a new house opportunity?
I just, I just know that 25 years ago, or 30 years ago, when I got an SBA loan, there were quite a few people in this town that were on the third or fourth SBA loan. Bought a truck for a timber business, tried to make the business work, didn't work, and they ended up with a truck.
Yeah.
You know, they were, not that that would happen, I'm saying, in so much smaller amount, but just be vigilant about that they're spending what they, and I see you have that precaution here to show what, to make sure that the proof of expenses for reimbursement, how the funds are being used, if they're being used for what they say they are.
Right. Yeah, and-
Otherwise, it's a grid.
And I would encourage any applicants to take advantage of the local Small Business Development Center Coach and the other people on here, as Mr. Zuliani mentioned, you know, as mentors. Because any, that first year of business is tough, first three years of business is tough, and sometimes you have to hear, you have to have some tough critiques, you know, to help you succeed.
Even just resources, like a rest, to have some, and just to answer a question, that you could stumble on.
Well, I can tell you, so I've been very, I've been very busy the last month or so, working very hard to try to recruit businesses to downtown, and we've got a few, and a couple I myself have worked on business plans for and with, you know, and it's, it's, part of this is, we want to, we want to, we want to try to encourage and create an environment for as great, as great a sustainability as possible. So there, there would be some vetting. I mean, just because someone presents the, the business plan doesn't mean that it's perfect, and we just say, we put our stamp of approval on it, and they get, they get money. I mean, there needs to be some, are we sure? Have you thought about this? You know, let's, let, consider the market, kind of, because just because you have an idea doesn't mean it's for, for, for everyone, or it's going to fit the demographic that's here. We've got to find businesses that fit, that fit the need of the demographic. And one thing that, so Tammy and Lacey and myself were in a meeting within the last 10 days, it was, I think it was last week sometime, we were in a meeting with the State Director for the, for the SBDC, or the SBA, and he is a wealth of knowledge. He can, he is, he was formerly the Economic Development Director for Bluefield, West Virginia, and he had, he had a lot of good ideas, and, and he was talking about something kind of like this in Bluefield, but, you know, it's, just, he talked about one thing that really stuck with several of us, about a leakage study. And what that means is, what are, what do people need here that isn't here, and they're driving out of town for? What services don't we have? And so Brandon, from the Development Authority, wrote that down quickly and was very, he and I actually talked on the street earlier this week about, we got to get this leakage study, to find, it, it would be very beneficial to us to see what are the services that are, that, that people here want and need, but they're, they're leaving, they're leaving Buchanan and Upstate County to elsewhere to go get. So having that data to, to go along with something like this could be very beneficial. But, like, I'm, I'm working with two businesses right now for Main Street. Both, it are, it's, it's going to be a struggle just for them to get over the hurdle of making it through the first couple of months because of, of the expenses that are associated, and, you know, these, these businesses, no, no one's going to get massively rich off of a, off of a Main Street small business. You do it because you love it, you do it because you care about the community, you do it because it's, you know, it's, you, you've got a passion for something, and so there are people out there that can't, they can't, they can't live out their passion because they just can't even get over the hurdle of being able to turn that sign to open on the very first day because of the costs associated. So that's where the motivation for this is coming from.
Well, it's none of my business if I had a building downtown, but this is what I always say, if I had a building downtown, why wouldn't I make it more reasonable for people to rent it and keep it filled month after month after month instead of, it closes up every three, four, five months because they got to go out of business here, it's empty. Now, some people say they get a tax break because it is empty. I don't know, but, and, and everything, I think if businesses downtown would stay open until at least six o'clock because the majority of people work till five, so that's why they go to the mall. That's why they go to the mall.
So we, we are open until six o'clock.
Well, that's good.
But I will tell you, it is difficult because we're about the only one, and so people aren't going to come downtown just for, you know-
Well, that's why I'm saying, if the majority of people would do that, it'd probably make a difference downtown, because everybody works till five.
And that's where some of this, I mean, so just for full disclosure, Mr. Zuliani said that he would be more than happy to be the established small business owner on this to help, because I, I think that we, we need people, that's part of the mentoring, that's part of the coaching, that's part of the, you know, and a small business coach provides a wealth of knowledge as well. And, you know, the local bank representative will not be me, because I will serve as mayor of Buchanan, but, you know, we'll have somebody from another bank also just to provide balance so that we, because if, if a business loan is, is a direction they want to go, they need, not everybody knows even how to start the process of getting a business loan. It is a cumbersome process. So I, I think, I think we've got a really good opportunity here to, to kind of forge a path here in north central West Virginia and, and really be known as the most business-friendly city. So I'd like us to take a chance on it.
I think it's very worthwhile to take the chance. I would be for it. I think that, you know, from my perspective, I don't think it was going to- that, you know, from my perspective, I don't think we've gotten in this room. And I came from a very small town in New Jersey, Haddonfield, New Jersey, and I went into another town, Bloomington, Indiana. But we don't, I don't think most people have an understanding about the impact that large stores like Walmart, Lowe's, um, and Amazon has had on our society. It's amazing. And Amazon, Amazon's getting even more aggressive. And I think it's very difficult for a lot of retail establishments to even try to compete with them. And, but what I'm seeing out there also is that there was sort of a migration from rural communities to big cities. I think that has reversed. I think that problems we have in large cities today, we're seeing people that wanna come to small towns like Buchanan. So I think this is definitely worth the effort to see what we can do to help our society here.
Ms. Mayor, I'll move to the truth. I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Sanders, we have a second by Mr. Thomas. Any further discussion? Here in the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of supporting the Business Startup Initiative in partnership with the Upstate County Development Authority, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed, motion carries. Thank you all. I'm, I'm excited for this.
Good.
We've already taken care of Dee. Um, and so now we need to go, Crystal Shaw is a new member of our, um, sanitary board. And so because planning commission is pretty restrictive, you can't serve on the planning commission and serve on anything else. So we need to accept her resignation from the planning commission. And that means I'm gonna find somebody else for the planning commission because I overlooked it. So, motion by Mr. Riggers, second by Mrs. Buckle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed, motion carries. If you have any ideas for planning commission, please let me know. Um, I would remind council members that I'm, we, I've asked for a executive session tonight, um, following this meeting relative to personnel matters and one property matter. Um, so please stay tuned for that. And so now we're down to council comments and announcements. Mr. Randall.
Just big thanks to today's everyone involved at the corridor. Appreciate Matt, Ethan very much. Thank you. Excited about Rotary as well as leadership, Uptown's new route and, uh, leadership. That's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Pam?
Same thing with Rotary. I've been glad to see them bring that to the table. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea that we're partnering with Elkins to bring tourism in. Um, also, I wasn't able to go, but I hear the Hillbillies Day is a huge success. And that they were actually happy over there because of the amount of space and everything. And so hopefully we'll have it next year. And I, and I actually voiced it to Gary already, I think it needs to be more in the fall because we need something in the fall in Buchanan. So, and one other thing, do you have to be in the city to be on the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you must be a Buchanan resident.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Ms. Pam, I agree about the fall. I, I do. I think that would be cool. Uh, Jack?
Well, of course, the, the project that the Rotary has undertaken and, um, the paving has been exceptional.
Yes.
The contractor's done a tremendous job. And I want to go on the record, I will not call Randy Sanders, Sanders, your honor.
You may eat those words one day.
I think we should get him a sticker for the back of here, just like Andy Griffith, so he can just turn it around and say, justice of the peace. So, all right, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Thomas?
I just endorse what everybody said.
Even the, even the Your Honor comment?
I'm gonna call him Judge.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Zuliani?
I just, Chief Gregory, you guys were phenomenal. Everyone in the city was phenomenal. Today, I was stuck dead in the water on 33. Actually, just minutes before, it must've happened. Couldn't go backwards, couldn't go forwards. Sat there for 20 minutes just to watch the amount of police and, you know, local sheriff, city, DOT, everyone coming to coordinate that. You can't practice that. It's not a real world. It's never gonna happen like that again. And I mean, every, as we were circled back to come off 33 and come down, you had traffic pouring onto our small streets from every direction, from every area, and everyone handled it really well. I mean, it was as good as it could've gone with that. And I know you can't practice that. There are that many agencies that pulled together. So that was fantastic. And everything kept flowing.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Sanders, you have a lot to read.
Okay, let's get with it. Reports of events, correspondence and information. We have the notice of the public hearing for September 4th, 2025, 7:00 p.m., Water Revenue Bond Anticipation Note Order Number 474. Notice of the RFP to financial institutions for the Water Revenue Bond Anticipation Note has been distributed. Buchanan Water Treatment Plant Project and our packet, we have the frequently asked questions noted at the FAQs. July 2025 Report of the Cat-Dog Activity from the Upstate County Commission is a part of our packet. A FOIA request from the SBA Communication, Reason New Communication Tower in the area. Next to the Colonial Arts Center, stand-up comedy will be presented August 28th, 2025, 7:00 p.m. Tickets are available for that event. Check our social media pages. Want to mention the Children's Festival will be held at the Spiker-Ethan Community Center on September 20th, 2025, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Uh, as I've been saying, how does the Event Center brush you for? I'm really looking forward to seeing this all developed. From August the 18th through September 30th, we have no events ourselves for the Event Center because of the parking lot pavement project. But entering into the fall, Walkover 11th, we have Real Shoot Wrestling Event coming back. October 18th, the Buchanan Upstate High School Class of 1970 Reunion. November 8th, we have a Mountain Heart Training Event that will bring a lot of folks from around the state into our city. 22nd is on November, could be a Holly-Jolly Craft Show. Uh, November 29th, we have Real Shoot Wrestling Event coming back. December 6th, this will be a, there's a little different name that's gonna be, uh, associated with this, but I had originally the Furball Fundraiser. A group of, uh, folks that are really dedicated to, uh, taking care of their pets and the, uh, our, our park, uh, here in town are gonna have a fundraising event at the Event Center. December 9th, we have a business having a private holiday event for their clients. December 20th, Real Shoot Wrestling Event coming back. We have a few other things on, on the dock. Uh, we just gotta get contracts issued for. Uh, as far as my comments as well, I, I agree with everyone. Today was a perfect storm. A storm would be the, the right wording, but I think it shows our leadership with Chief Gregory, um, memorandum of understanding and, and the different agencies working together. Chief Kimball, um, us getting the word out into the community, uh, our media partners, everybody involved. I think it just worked out well. It's not over yet, I guess. So, um, you know, if you'll let us know whenever the, uh, traffic is back to normal.
It's back.
Oh, it is back?
Yeah, we got a text.
You got a text during the meeting. Okay, great, great. So, so we're through that crisis. Um, so anyway, good job, well done with everyone at Ethan. You know, once again, your, your departments, you know, poured their weight today, did a great, great job. So, I've been working with Ethan on a couple of projects, too. Hopefully we'll have more information on, in the upcoming weeks. I'm pretty excited about it, too. So, looking forward to it. Thank you, Ms. Pam.
Thank you, sir. I wanna thank everybody for a great meeting tonight and thank you for your support on so many, uh, good initiatives, um, that are, that will positively benefit our community, um, certainly. And thank you again, Chief Gregory and Ethan and, uh, thank Chief Kimball. Um, yes, uh, it's, it's, you plan and you plan and then things happen and you have to drop everything and rush, uh, to, to the, to the scene. So, uh, appreciate everybody's cooperation and coordination with that event today. All right, at, um, 9:18, I entertain a motion that we adjourn into an executive session once the room is cleared. Thank you. Have a good weekend.